With a word of prayer and the pledge, if you would like to, please feel free to join us.
Now I'll call this meeting to order. Ms. Hurd, would you call role, please?
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes.
Ms. Mill?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Mr. Hawke?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
You get used to saying that, don't you?
Welcome, Ms. Hurd, or Ms. Hurd, would you call me? You should have received copies of the minutes from the November 12th, 2024 council meeting. Any corrections, changes, or comments?
Make a motion for approval as submitted second?
Have a motion and a second that we approve the minutes as submitted from November 12th. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As is eight.
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed, I would like, I recently had eye surgery. It's fine, but upon doctor's orders, I will be looking down entire meeting. So that's the reason why I will be pointed down, but not because I'm not interested in what's being said. So, you know, that's what I'll be doing.
It looks like it hurts.
It did. It's better. It's better. It's a lot better.
Okay, before we proceed, we have a special announcement tonight. Chief Harris, with your family, please come up. I've had the opportunity to work with Chief Harris quite a bit the last eight years, and I've learned one thing. He is a good officer. He's a good supervisor. I see some of his people here agreeing with that. He has done tremendous things already at the Conway Police Department. And tonight, we're going to take the title interim of him. And he's now the new police chief of the city of Conway. Chief, we have Judge Chuck Clausen here, an old friend of yours to swear yin. You still remember how to do this, Judge?
I do. Raise your right hand for me. You solemnly swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Arkansas, and to uphold the duties of the chief of police for the city of Conway, Arkansas, to the best of your abilities, to help you God. Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations, or condolences?
So first, I'd like to take this opportunity to show my gratitude to Mayor Castleberry for his confidence in me and giving me this position. I also want to thank my family, especially my wife, Suzanne. There's a saying that goes that behind every great man, there's a strong woman. By far, far from great, but she truly is a strong woman. For past 29 years of marriage, she's absolutely the reason why I'm standing here today. So, she, for 25 years, so for more than, mostly 25 years in my law enforcement career, she's been in a leadership role in her profession. And so I try to model and mimic her leadership style every day at the police department. So it's paid off for some, but for the past 22 years, Conway has been home to my family and me. Two of the three degrees my wife has are from UCA. And our son Zach, sitting next to her, he recently graduated from UCA with a computer science degree and currently works for Axiom. So, being chief of police and serving in this role, it's important and it's more than just a job. It's a commitment to the city. It's commitment to bringing safety and the well-being to a city that has given so much to my family and me. So, I'd just like to say that I'm thankful. I'm kind of lost for words, which a lot of people in this room are going to know that's strange. But I'm here to say that the safety of Conway is important to me. It's personal, as well it is to my family. So I'm dedicated to protecting and serving the city that we all love. So, thank you.
Bring your family back up here. Judge, would you come back up? Counsel, would you?
They had nothing to do with it, was it? I was assure you that.
All right. Next up, we have the monthly financials, Mr. Winningham.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. We are looking at October tonight. First line item there in our general fund revenues, the ad valorem taxes, it's a property tax. You can see we took in a little over half a million dollars in October. That'll be the, from folks paying their property tax bills that were due by the 15th of October to Faulkner County. We are up about 6% over what we brought in same time last year. So through October of '23 compared to October '24, we're up about 6%. So that's good news. Our sales tax, we were down actually 2.5% in October. Still at 3.7% for the year. And being down 2.5% doesn't necessarily sound good, but when you look at it in dollars, it was only about 79,000. And we, total collections during the month was 3.1 million. So, 2.5%, not a big number. Kind of sounds big when you're talking sales tax as a whole, because we're only projected 3% growth for the year, which it looks like that's probably what we're going to hit. But when you see a down month, 2.5%, don't be alarmed. It's not a whole lot of dollars. I went and looked at the information from the state on the sales tax, kind of trying to narrow down why we might have been down. Our rebates were up 44,000 last year to this year, so that's most of it. And then, you know, I've heard me mentioned before, we have a category of construction-related businesses. And it seems to be a trend now. They'll go through and they'll file amended returns. I don't really know the specifics of how that works, but that's what state DFNA told me, is that these companies typically will file an amended return, which causes their tax collected for the month to show as negative. So we have that again. So those two factors combined is what led to us being down. I don't see any, I don't see the economy being down. So that's good news, I think. You'll notice our beverage tax, we got it updated. It's, those are collections through October. And that one, there's a little bit of growth there. It's relatively flat. It's up about 2% over last year. But we're glad to get that, get those numbers in, because it really helped in the preparation of the budget for us to project a number for that for 2025. Another revenue item of good news, you'll see our parks has collected almost one and a half times their budget already, just through 10 months. It's been a good year at the Expo Center. We budgeted about 200,000 in rental fees there, and they're already at 300. So they're doing well. And then our baseball and softball field rentals have been really good this year as well. So that's the reason for that. Overall, our expenditures are well below where you'd expect to be compared to budget through 10 months. So you say we've got a really good net revenue, 2.4 million bottom line through the end of October. And then that filters over onto our balance sheet. If you look at our operating cash, it's the highest it's been so far this year, 19.2 million. And hopefully, by the end of this year, we'll hit that 20 million mark. Got my fingers crossed on that. It'd be a good thing to see. The only other thing I would point out in this month's financials is, same way that ad valorem helped the general fund, it also, the street fund, it's like some ad valorem, and it helped the street fund as well, helped their bottom line quite a bit. And other than that, there was no significant changes in our other funds.
Tyler, across the board, the interest income, it's just, I mean, there's some significant positives.
Yes.
Yeah. Kind of some unexpected areas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trying to add it up.
Big number.
It's a big number.
Any questions to Mr. Winningham? Counsel, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financials ending October 31st, 2024. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
As is eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Winningham.
Yes, sir. That is related to the property tax. So government accounting rules require that we book basically a year's worth of ad valorem as accounts receivable, because those are collected a year in arrears. That's what that number is.
Okay. Next up is community development. Mr. Hawkins, turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on this portion of the agenda is the ordinance waiving the readings of those for A4, A5, and B2 tonight. I would take a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to approve the waiving of all three readings for the ordinances on tonight's council meeting. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
As is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution requesting the Faulkner County Tax Collector place some liens against properties as a result of incurred expenses by the city. Another, Mr. Clausen.
Yes, a good-looking one.
That would be correct.
I disagree. It was all green. Hey, I always know you used to whip chuck all the time with your thoughts. So I'm going with you every time, man.
The property in question is at 2600 North, or 2600 Donaghy Avenue. Is there a representative, an owner from 2600 Donaghy Avenue with us tonight? Seeing no one step forward, Mr. Clausen, I'm going to let you talk about this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. This is just a vacant lot over on Donaghy, kind of around Dairy Queen. And we, we've had it rented up several times. Typically, the lien gets paid. I don't know why. Why it has to go through this process every time, but it does. We put a buffer on it, took three guys, one hour to work on it, and got it looking better. So there's not, it's pretty cut and dry.
$160.64 in so-called. Yes, sir.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution. And Ms. Hurd, I have it as R2460.
Yeah.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution placing a lien on the property at 2600 Donaghy Avenue in the amount of 160.64. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
As is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve equipment disposal for the Department of Public Works. And it looks like we've got three pieces of machinery to deal away with, Spencer. Can you tell us about that?
Yes, sir. We've got a 2005 Cub Cadet side-by-side. We've got a 2007 zero-turn Kubota and another ATV. It's a 2007 Kawasaki Mule. And it's just, it costs too much to keep them on the road. They're kind of in bad shape. One needs a motor, ignition, transmission. It's just time to retire these. You can imagine if we've gotten 19 years of that Cub Cadet, it's time to do something different, so.
Counsel?
I'll make a motion for the request for disposal of the assets.
Have a motion and a second to approve this consideration. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
As is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at 805 Fourth Street from R2A to C3. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on November 18th. And at that time, the commission voted nine to nothing to forward this to city council with a recommendation of approval.
And, Ms. Tucker, how are you?
Hello, sir.
What can you tell us?
I'm doing well. How are you? And the request to rezone this property at 804 Fourth Street from R2A to C3 is so that the entire site that the applicant is looking to develop is zoned the same. This property in particular is completely surrounded by C3, except for across the street.
Is Mr. Davidson here? Is Mr. Davidson here? Would he like to speak? Mr. Davidson, I know the council knows what you're wanting to do with the property. Would you explain to our folks at home, if don't please, sir?
Hi, I'm not Mr. Davidson, I'm Jason with Davidson Law, Davidson Engineering, one of his employees.
I've got you down as Bear Davidson, my apologies.
Yeah, he couldn't make it here tonight, so he asked me to come. But basically, we're trying to get all this, they're trying to get all this property zoned the same so they can develop it, you know, into one development. Which is later, the conditional uses later on in this meeting.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for either of our two folks? Mr. Hawkins, what did you say the Planning Commission's vote was on this?
It was unanimous, forwarded to us with approval.
Okay.
What are we, what are we going to, what are we building?
Well, that particular proportion in particular is not going to, it's going to be kind of like a additional for parking and stuff for the, they're building a piece at the very front on Park Rider. With, it's going to be a four-story building, retail on the bottom floor, and, and apartments on the top. And then the rest of the property is going to be, with the exception of the very corner of Fifth and Park Rider, is going to be part of that development with the parking requirement and, you know, landscaping.
No complaints from neighbors, Ms. Tucker?
Very good.
With that, I'll make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance O2482.
Second?
I have a motion, I'm sorry.
Eighty-three.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt this ordinance to rezone property located at 805 Fourth Street from R2A to C3. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Ms. Mel? Aye. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Yes.
This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezone property at 333 400 and 500 Southeast German Lane. The present zoning is A1. The requested zoning is an S1 zoning. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on 18th, I believe it was. It was November 18th. And at that time, the commission voted to send this to City Council with a recommendation of approval. And again, that vote was nine to zero. And we have an ordinance to read for this item. It's ordinance O2484.
So Conway Christian is the applicant and is currently in an, as Mr. Hawkins said, in an A1 zoning with a conditional use permit. And they're asking to change the zoning to S1, which would be more in keeping with its current use. They're in the planning stages of future expansion. And in order to avoid having to come back before you, with a CUP, staff kind of encouraged them to rezone the entire site. So approval of the zoning would negate the current CUP.
But the S1 zoning, that's what they're...
Yes, they, it's allowed by right in S1.
I'll make a motion for the adoption of ordinance O2484.
Have a motion, a second, to approve this ordinance rezoning property located at 333 400 and 500 Southeast German Lane from A1 to S1. Any further discussion?
Question.
Yes, sir.
One of these pieces of property, property to the west, is that the one that, few meetings ago, came up as possible redevelopment for many storage?
I believe it is.
Same piece of property?
I believe so. And they close on it in January? Yes, January.
Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Hawks?
Yes.
Ms. Mel? Aye. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
That passes eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve a conditional use permit to allow MF2 density in the C3 zone for the property located at 470 Park Rider. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission on November 18th. And at that time, the commission voted nine to zero that the request be forwarded to City Council with a recommendation of approval. And we...
Ms. Tucker, you want to talk about this one as well?
Yes, sir, I will. The, the rezone that you just approved from R2A to C3 is part of this development. The applicant intends to have multifamily dwellings which front Park Rider between Fourth and Fifth Street, and which will require a conditional use permit in the C3 zone. They've been communicating with St. Joe, and Fourth Street will remain one-way during school drop-off and pickup. That was one, that was the only concern that was, that was brought to us. And the complex will have an additional entrance and exit off of Fifth Street, which flows both ways. They're asking for an MF2 density, which allows for 18 units per acre with no site less than an acre.
Any ingress and egress off of Park Rider at all?
None at all.
None at all. Good. Thank you.
They've been made aware of the future Park Rider expansion. Right-of-way is all been dedicated. Thanks.
Blowing a little easier now, isn't it?
A little bit.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Tucker?
I'll make a motion for the allowance of the conditional use permit.
Second?
Have a motion, a second, to approve this consideration. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
This is eight to zero. Mr. Hawkins.
Final item here, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to modify the current conditional use permit to allow retail, general uses, and O1 zoning for property located at 2555 Prince Street. This is for the specific piece of property. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting on November 18th. And at that time, the commission voted nine to nothing to send this to City Council. Nine to nothing in favor of sending it with a recommendation of approval. And we have those conditions there. But I do think that there were some changes made at the Planning Commission level that we might want to go back and relook. Is that correct, Ms. Tucker?
Yes, sir. There's quite a bit of information here. Let me just start at the front. So the property at 2555 Prince has a CUP attached to it, which was issued in 2008, and it had no expiration date, which allowed for retail restricted. The applicant is asking for a CUP for retail general. The Planning Commission approved this with 16 conditions. The few that were discussed at length, I'm going to go into. Most of them were, were pretty standard. The hours of operation, the applicant originally requested 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The commission took it upon themselves to expand those hours to allow for 5:00 AM to 12:00 midnight, citing consistency in the area for other businesses. Due to the outdoor seating and alcohol sales, the council may want to consider reverting that back to 10:00 PM closing time and amend that in your motion. Several of the, the neighbors where it borders residential to the south have, have voiced concerns about the closing time. And I've spoken with the applicant, they're perfectly fine with a 10:00 PM closing. They're working with Shadrack to allow a joint access drive so that no additional curb cuts will be on Prince.
Good.
There's a residential abutting the south side of the property, so we were requiring a 30-foot buffer, which no parking structure, lots, or anything can be constructed. It's got to be complete green space. And the condition states that there will be adequate landscaping to create a barrier between the properties, as well as an eight-foot fence. During site development review, we will determine the exact species, type, and size of the landscaping to offer the most minimal impact of noise to the neighbors. The applicant is agreeable to all of these conditions. The homeowner that currently has the white vinyl fence, if you've noticed that, has agreed to take that fence down, let the wooden privacy fence that Rotolo's is going to erect be the only fence out there. And they have also agreed to take the edge of Rotolo's property line, and they're going to, at their own cost, going to extend that fence to cover the rest of the site for that neighbor. Does that make sense? I should have brought visuals.
An eight-foot fence?
Yes, sir.
And so that will, that... I want to make sure I understand this. We have the buffer zone is in there?
Yes, sir.
And we have the eight-foot fence? And, and the hours of operations, I didn't understand that.
Okay, so the applicant asked for a 10:00 PM closing time. When it was in Planning Commission, there was a lot of discussion about everything to do with this site. And the Planning Commission sort of took it upon themselves to expand their hours so that they didn't have to close until midnight. The neighbors have got some issue with that, and the applicant is willing to, to stick with the 10:00 PM.
On that particular piece of property, understand they also serve alcohol at the pizza parlor.
That's, that's what's being proposed, is the Rotolo's Pizza.
The thing of it, it seems like people that eat, have beer with their pizza will probably be finished by 9:00. And people that drink beer past 9:00 are probably not eating pizza. What are you trying to say, Mr. Tucker? Well, I've, I've heard that. I'm, I'm not sure.
There are people that stay up later than 9:00. You and I, we don't, but...
And also, there, this store operate, it closes at 10:45 in Memphis.
The Rotolo's?
Yeah, the, the pizza place that's supposed to...
You agreed on 10:00, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
What time was it?
10:00.
Change it back to 10:00.
Oh.
Never mind.
From midnight.
Now, somebody, I think one of the neighbors did mention 9:00.
Yeah.
In her letter.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's true.
That's where I got 9:00.
David, you're looking up too much.
Yeah.
The letter that you reported from Ms. Schumate had some, some information in there that was not correct as far as the surrounding businesses and their closing time. If, if and when Brahms comes in, their closing time is 10:45. But there are also not abutting any residential now that the house has been taken down. So, um, the ones that are abutting residential, the latest that any of them are open, except for Taco Bell, is 10:00.
Ms. Tucker, did the applicant request 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM? Or, I'm sorry, 11:00?
11:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
And it's a pizza place?
Yes, sir.
And they're going to start serving pizza and beer at 5:00 in the morning, if we approve this this way?
Well, okay.
Is that right?
There's, there's a lot of CUPs along there that, that are tied to those pieces of property. Shadrack's got through with, with no limitations. They can be open 24 hours, unfortunately. They're not going to be, because they're coffee. And then Taco Bell is 24 hours. But the rest of everybody around there, Don Pepe's closes at 9:00. But Don Pepe's is now serving breakfast, so they ask for hours, expanded hours in the morning time. And they said if Rotolo's ever decides they want to serve breakfast, they should be able to without having to come back. That's where they got the 5:00 AM. To match Shadrack's hours.
So the management asked for 10:00 PM?
The management asked for 10:00 PM.
Well, if the, if the management's good with 10, I think, I think we should be good with 10.
Well, I'm not concerned about 10, I'm worried about 5:00 AM, is what I'm concerned about.
Oh, I, I understand.
That's a little early in the day to start drinking.
I don't know that they would make any sort of profit at that time of the morning, but you never know.
I think, I think, I know there was a letter with 9, but I think it's a good, good in the middle from midnight to 9 to go to 10.
And they, the letter I'm looking at, they did ask for 9, but said that 10 at the absolute latest, so...
If, if the owners are good with that, I'm good with it. But it's up to y'all.
So the whole rationale, the Planning Commission was trying to get some continuity along the street.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm trying, because I was trying to figure out what in the world...
They had some... They had some erroneous information about how late some of the other ones stay, stay open.
But it does make sense that if this is a restaurant that ever, you know, have breakfast, you know, but you can have breakfast pizza and get your coffee next door at Shadrack.
Sure. Take a run on the trail first, and then...
Yeah, but then go run it off. Or bike it off.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not so worried about the early, because it'd be for breakfast.
They currently do not have a breakfast menu, but you just never know. So that was the rationale. Up to you, Mr. Jones. So...
I got a few emails, I got more. I'll make that motion.
Well, I'm not quite done yet. Hang on just a second. The only other revisions that were made, the applicant requested that the timeline for the expiration of the CUP be extended to 24 months rather than our standard 18 months. And that will expire only if development has not started by then. There is also a caveat that, that the, if the use ceases for a consecutive period of 18 months, that that would negate the CUP as well. He has asked for that to be amended to 24 months. And Planning Commission approved that, which we're totally fine with. As long as it's got an expiration date, because CUPs used to not. And we've got a lot of them around. And that would negate the current CUP that they have on there. So in your motion, if you don't mind changing those hours...
So I have one more question. What are the hours that Rotolo's are, is okay with working, like...
They intend to be open from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM at this point in time.
Okay.
What they were trying to avoid is them having to come back before the Planning Commission and the council to have any of those hours expanded.
They are okay with 11:00?
I believe that's their intention, yes. They've indicated to me that that's their intention to be open 11:00 AM to 10:00.
That's consumer traffic hours, not their employees could be there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and Jared is here tonight, if y'all would hear from him.
If you would, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Jared Coleman, 1400 West Marcus Street, Liderock, Arkansas, 72201. So our, I guess our original request was from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. This is what we worked through with staff. We actually came back and requested 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. So that's our request. I think, as you stated, they don't currently serve breakfast, but in the event that our tenant wants to serve breakfast, we'd like to have that flexibility to do so without having to come back and get a new CUP or anything amended. So that was our request. Just wanted to clarify.
Where did 11 to 10 come from? I don't see anything about 11 to 10. When did that take some about?
Well, it's kind of, so we originally requested 11 to 10. And then after staff came back, we then requested 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And that is when staff, that is when the Planning Commission recommended 5:00 AM to 12:00, 12:00 AM. So we're fine with 10:00 PM. That's, that's within our existing operating hours. Our request would be from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Again, there's, currently they don't operate at that time. So as the lady over here said, and they've been with, you know, breakfast pizza or something like that, we just wanted to give the flexibility to the tenant without having to come back. But currently, the operating hours are from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Most of their stores.
I'm okay.
Five is...
7 to 10, I think there's a few emails I got with comparing about late night.
End with the buffer and the fence.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Appreciate it. So we will need a motion with two amendments?
A move.
Put the word right here.
Cut off, Charles.
That, that's correct, Mr. Jones.
Your amendment, Mr. Jones, is 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Is there a second one? Second amendment?
Do we have to put something in there about the buffer or is that already there?
It's in there. It's there.
Do we have to change the expiration to the 24 months?
Yeah, to the 24 months.
It, it was approved at 24 months at planning commission, so that doesn't need amending. It's just the hours. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We need one amendment. We have a motion. We, I don't have a second. I'm sorry. Have a motion in a second to, uh, approve this quest with the amendment that the hours changed from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Right? Correct. Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
This came to us several meetings ago as potential Starbucks, I believe.
Correct.
I hope Rotolo's is very, very, very successful. But let's say at some point in the future they close, is there anything in this that stops Starbucks from going in there at that point?
I actually think Starbucks is coming into that area on a different lo, at a different location.
Okay. What does it stop? Something else that may not be welcome there from coming in? Is it locking into this, I guess is the question.
Ms. Tucker?
If Rotolo's were to close, they have 24 months to get another tenant in there.
Could it be a Starbucks?
And it, well, it could be, it could be just about any restaurant with drive-through. Now, I don't know that they would use that big of a building for a Starbucks. I kind of doubt it, but you just don't, I mean, I can't swear.
What worries me is that's a very weird little turn-in, right after a bridge on a very busy street. And in hindsight, where the Starbucks is wedged in on Dave Ward by the, or Street Bank, that's a really odd setup. Probably not the best design in hindsight. Um, and I just don't want to create another situation of something there that's gonna cause backup on Prince Street like it's also, oh, sometimes does on Dave Ward. So I, I don't know. Um, I don't think this pizza place will, but, you know, you don't know what's gonna happen in the future. Maybe there's nothing we can do about that.
I do see that. That is a concern.
I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm certainly not speculating, but, but, um, you know, we all used to say that if, um, this gets passed as is and the applicant walked out and wins the lottery tomorrow and decides to get out of the business and all of a sudden Starbucks might be a buyer. I don't know.
Oh, that's fair.
Yeah. I'm sorry, the applicant is Blue Whale Development and Rotolo's is their tenant. So-
I understand.
Anything that Blue Whale wants to get in there would be-
So if we pass this, not Blue Whale could change their mind and more talk Starbucks?
They still gotta get the, these, I mean, the, uh, license drive through because according to you, these people talk to, uh, Shadrack's by using their, uh, interest there. And I think that would hold up about Starbucks because they had no way to get in there.
Right.
But I do-
That's true. They, um, Shadrack, they have to have Shadrack's, um-
That's the only entrance.
Right.
I get that. So, I mean, and, you know, I'm, I'm going in rabbit holes here, but let's say six months from now Shadrack decides they don't like it. They just put up the gate and shut that entrance?
Well, no, it'll be, it'll be a joint entrance. They'll have 50/50.
Yeah, it'll still be shared with Shadrack.
Yeah.
You're telling me now Shadrack has 100% control over it?
They did, they do. They did. That's why they did not want to work with the last group. I think since then, and you correct me-
They will expand that entrance.
Yeah.
And it'll go over onto the land that Blue Whale is trying to develop, so it'll be a joint entrance. Shadrack's, they're having, I mean, they have to work with them to do this, but they won't have total control over it once it's done.
The ones that's been built, they can't take it away.
Right.
Could I ask Jared a question?
Sure.
Jared, do you have a problem with us saying that the tenant with the pizza place, that all of these items that we're talking about now is good only if they show up? You have a problem with that?
Um-
And can we do that?
I mean, I, I guess I would prefer not to have another condition. Um, but I will say that, in, correct me if I'm wrong, but, so we currently, just so you know where we are, we haven't executed a lease with Rotolo's, so we're not planning on going anywhere. The built, the facility that we're building is a 4,500 square foot building with no drive-through. For a Starbucks or anything like that, they're gonna require a drive-through. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that if we were, if we chose to put a, if we did a significant change to our building, we would be required to come back in and get an updated CUP. So I think that at that, if Starbucks were to come in and want a drive-through, they'd have to approve it either way.
Okay, that, that makes me feel better. So if, if, if a, if a drive-through were ever to be requested for this restaurant or anything else, it would require another change to this?
CUP, yes, and I misspoke earlier. I believe I said that any restaurant with drive-through could come in. I was wrong about that. It's just any restaurant.
I think without a drive-through, that takes care of the concern about backing up onto the street.
And I believe, sorry to interrupt, but I believe that with going to retail general, a, uh, restaurant with a drive-through is permitted. But if we were to make a significant change to the site plan, that would then have to come back. So I think that by right, we are allowed a drive-through, but since we're currently don't have it on our site plan, if we chose to make that big of a change in the site plan, we'd have to have it approved. So, yes.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
I think that clears that up.
So we have a motion in a second to approve this consideration with the one amendment that the hours changed from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir.
All right, now we have Public Service Committee. First item is consideration to approve the disposal of inventory for the Department of Sanitation. We have Mr. Hopper here.
Hello, Mr. Hopper, me, council.
Did you, did you hurt the deer population any?
No. But it was intentional, so I got to sit and watch, uh, several in the woods, so. Sometimes killing is not just, or, uh, shooting's not just with a gun, it's with a camera, so.
There you go. Well, I, I sit with my grandkids, so I understand.
Um, welfare consideration tonight. We've got four pieces of equipment, or one piece of heavy equipment and three trucks that we need to take off our fixed asset inventory. We're no longer, well, actually, one of them we are currently using and next item is a replacement if, if it's approved, so.
I'll make the motion for the, uh, removal of the assets and of course it states on here that, um, they'll be auctioned on an online auction, so.
Have a motion in a second to approve this consideration for the street department to remove inventory. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero. Next up is an ordinance to approve the appropriation funds for the purchase of a hydraulic excavator for the Department of Sanitation. Mr. Hopper?
Okay, this is, uh, for per, for a purchase of a used excavator. Uh, we currently have a 2012 Dusand that's got a little over 11,000 hours on it. And, uh, we use it for our multi-operation and it's also our backup for our main landfill excavator as well, so. Um, and with used equipment, it's not required by state, uh, state law to bid those items. So, and this, this machine, the new machine, or slightly used, got 1,100 hours on it.
I mean, broke in good.
It is.
Motion to approve the ordinance. Have a motion second to adopt this ordinance to allow the purchase of a excavator for sanitation department with the emergency clause. With the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd?
The ordinance, oh, 2485. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Zisby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkes?
Yes.
Ms. Mel? Aye. Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Mr. Grine?
Aye. Thank you.
Well, any emergency clause?
I'm sorry, there we go.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Zisby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkes?
Yes.
Ms. Mel? Aye. Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Mr. Grine?
Aye.
Those both pass eight to zero. Next up, we have consideration to approve.
What bunch of-
Yeah. Consideration to dispose of inventory for the Department of Beer, Food, and Technology. Come on up, Kevin.
Good evening, council. We just have your normal run-of-the-mill, um, IT equipment we need to dispose of. Um, some laptops, some desktops, some monitors, and, um, if they're in operating condition, we'll, um, auction those off. And if they're not, they'll be brought to landfill and electronic wasted, so.
Make a motion for approval of those.
Second, have a motion in a second to approve the disposal of inventory for the Department of Sanitation. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero. Thank you, Kevin. Next up, we have some old business is to consider the, uh, approve the settlement for the Lynn versus Conway, for the city of Conway versus city of Conway, and I will turn this over to Mr. Pinkin by.
All right, so I, I don't know if all of you remember, um, our discussion from the previous city council meeting, but, um, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. So let me just lay it out as I did the first time out. What is up for consideration is an offer to settle by Mary Catherine Lynn for the property that was acquired for the Sixth Street overpass. When the city began its lawsuit, it deposited $248,250. The counterclaim by Ms. Lynn started at 750 and then it became 1 million. The 750 was based on the property appraisal that was done for Ms. Lynn. Um, city's appraisal is different, which is not unusual. So the reason that, uh, and what's under consideration is for the council to determine whether it's going to authorize the mayor to, uh, accept that offer, to settle the lawsuit. So my role as the attorney is to evaluate risk and to also, um, follow the law regarding fairness of property owners. So when we talk about risk, just as I talked about last, um, week, in general, in eminent domain cases, juries tend to meet in the middle. The way these, the way the law is set out is when any government entity takes property anywhere in the state of Arkansas for public purpose. Um, if the parties can't agree on the value of the property, which um, then the law says that the circuit court shall empanel 12 jurors and they will decide how much the property's worth. That's always carries a risk. Anytime 12 people, um, who we don't know yet, will be deciding the value rather than the parties involved. They do tend to split the difference in my experience in these cases, and that would be a problem for the city, given the dollar amount involved, um, between what the Lynn valuation is and what the city appraisers evaluate the property. Middle ground would be about 500,000, um, and that would be absent any flood damage claim. So that would be a problem because of the interest, and I know this is gonna surprise everyone here, but when we're talking about 12 jurors empaneled from both inside and outside the city, not everybody thinks the government is always right. That's just the reality. We don't know who these people would be. Um, so I have to evaluate and advise the council on my assessment of the risk, which is sort of like trying to look in the future and forecast weather. It's not a, an exact science. If it were, probably wouldn't be a need for courts at all. But I also have to follow the law in advising the council as to Arkansas's recognition of property rights as being of highest constitutional order and protection. And that the government, anywhere in the state is obligated to pair, pay a fair price for a property that it acquires. I don't, not sure if y'all recall where the, um, the difference really between the city and what Mrs. Lynn is offering is a request that the city pay a square foot price for all the property acquired. And our appraiser didn't do that. Remember, there was about 20, 25,000 square foot that our appraiser determined had zero value. And that's always a problem anytime the government is acquiring property to say, well, we're gonna take the property, but we're gonna say it's not worth anything, so we're not gonna pay you. Now, if, and we've, I've had other cases like this, um, property acquisition that had to be resolved by litigation. And I can tell you that one of the things that we really look at in cases like this is the square foot value. Um, and a lot of times that's where the problem is. We're not, our appraisers are not that far apart on square foot value. It's the usable versus nonusable. And if the pla, if the, the property owner were requesting, if all the other properties in that area sold for $10 a square foot, sort of, and that's a comparable sales evaluation, which is the most common in, uh, and I really appreciate everyone staying awake, by the way. The most common is to look at what other similar properties have sold for near as can be the subject property, in this case, Ms. Lynn's property. What did it sell for a square foot? If, if the property owner were saying, well, in spite of the fact that most other comparable properties sold for $10 a square foot, I want $80 a square foot. My advice to the council would be to probably reject that offer because I don't think that any 12 people would, um, abandon that comparable sales. And they really don't have the option to do that. There are rules, um, that they would have to follow even the 12. But that's not what Mrs. Lynn is asking for here. She's asking for $10 a square foot, which is afforded by, really by both of them. Now, if the council were to vote to authorize the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement, as I said last time, I think that it needs to be done in the form of a counteroffer, which accepted that price, but added an additional condition that all claims are waived now and forever.
Did you con, did you contact Ms. Lynn about that? Because that's what I remember about our last conversation concerning this matter is that you were going to contact her and see if they would release the flood issues.
Contact her attorney.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, it's okay. I can't talk to her directly because she's, that's okay. But I have discussed this with opposing council and made that clear that that would be my recommendation. I don't get to make the decision. Um, and so y'all could tell me, no, we wanna take our chances with any future claims, not saying that you would do that. But I'm the lawyer, so, um, but might strongly advise you that that should be a part of any settlement. I don't think that, and I'm not worried about Mrs. Lynn. I want to make that clear. Um, throughout this whole process, that, that she's been fair and, and equitable to deal with. But, um, we don't know what's gonna happen to that property five years from now, 10 years from now, if it's sold to a third person that doesn't have Mary Catherine Lynn's character, let's say. We may be looking at it, and that's really what we need the waiver for. I'm not worried about Mrs. Lynn. I'm worried about the future, but that's what I get paid for.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkin, ma'am.
So do you need a recommendation from us on what to offer? Is that where we are at this point in time?
Well, so we've got the, the counteroffer which would be 516125. Now, that would of course give the city credit for the 248, 250. It's already deposited. So this would be 516125 in total.
For 300,000.
260.
Yeah.
But what the, the council, what I'm recommending is that the council authorize the mayor to enter into that settlement agreement with the condition that any and all claims whatsoever be waived. And that this case be resolved finally.
And that's for the property that the council, that the, and I think auditor said, not the auditor.
Appraisal.
Appraisal said wasn't working.
That would include that, correct?
Okay.
The fact that it's counted on nine years, it could go on extended, even much longer.
Right now, we have a December trial day, but there are criminal cases ahead of it. And those cases, those cases will go to trial. And I can tell you that we, the city attorney's office has a number of criminal cases that, um, are pending in the circuit court. Um, not everybody, not all the criminals like what we're doing in district court, so there's some appeals. We work really hard and my deputies do to get those cases moving as quickly as possible. I'm very happy with the work that they're doing, but as we discussed before, there's just very limited docket space. Now, two things I would point out, and that don't directly have anything to do with this, is first, we have, my office has modified our entire approach to eminent domain. My recommendation is that we lawyers get involved much, much earlier in the process, like day one. Um, and that has worked very, very well.
Yes.
The, the, um, the- The, the, um, the other thing that we're doing, um, is all the eminent domain cases, and this is not something the city attorney's office, this is up to the circuit clerk, but all the eminent domain cases are filed in the civil division.
Well, I've, I've, I've yet to see any property in Conway, Arkansas that was worth $0.
Zero.
Yeah. Counsel, back to you.
I'm kind of of the opinion that we need to settle with, kind of, in this. It's been long enough, uh, and, uh, I, I'll make a motion that we accept. Authorize our mayor to enter into that agreement.
With, with the waiver of all claims?
With the waiver attached, and that must be attached.
I have a motion and a second to approve this consideration to allow the mayor's office to, uh, enter into an agreement with the Lynn family. I'm assuming is that the right way to say that, Mr.?
Yes, your honor.
And, uh, put this to rest. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero. And I appreciate what you said about Kathy. I've known Kathy. She sends Melissa and I a Christmas card. I'm sorry, anniversary card. She's sent one for the last 46 years. She's good people.
Well, I can tell you this, when we took her deposition, I, I won't go into detail about the questions and answers, but found it a very, very forthright and honorable lady.
She, uh, she is a fine Christian lady. She walks her talk. Counsel, that's all we have tonight. Budget? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Raise one thing. Um, you live in Ward Two, northeast side of town. Early voting has started in the runoff election, started today. I got to be number one. Oh, wow.
Very important election.
Please, yes, it is.
Yeah, I ran May, I was 76.
Way to come in there, Woody.
So head up to the courthouse this week and.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mel. Thank you for reminding everyone. Uh, counsel budget will go out to, y'all should receive your copies of it tomorrow. We'll be getting that. And I hope you all and everyone watching has a truly great Thanksgiving and that you're thankful for all that we have in this nation and this, this city. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.